All right. Can y'all hear me? All right, it is 5:00 PM and I call to order the October 21st, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
Madam Chair, I move we enter executive session to review employment recommendations and updates in 2025-2026 homeschool applications, to review contractual matter related to the 2018 bond referendum audit, and to receive a quarterly litigation update from General Counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All those in favor? Any opposed? We will now enter executive session.
Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools.
We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day. Because when our schools are safe, our students can.
A day in the life of a new principal, every day is different and every day is amazing. I get to come in and meet new students every day. That's my goal, to get to know everyone, the kids at Gilbert Middle School.
You show up every day hoping for the best and usually, you know, what you experience exceeds that expectation. So trying to get in classrooms, see students, be present, that's always my main goal. Of course, there's other things that come along and we have to throw in the mix, but ultimately being with kids is the best part of the day.
The most chaotic rewarding job ever. So, you know, I don't think that I anticipated all of the things that would be thrown at me, but I've had tremendous support from the district and I've been able to just learn a whole lot in this short eight-week span. So it's been absolutely rewarding. I love the children at this school. I absolutely love the teachers here. And it's a joy to come to work.
I think that it's important that the students see you around and get to know you and know who you are and know that you're going to be there for them, but also to get to know the teachers. I think that they're going to be more invested in what you do when you're in the middle of what's going on. And just to know what's going on in the classrooms. So when I'm talking to the community members, parents, or anybody else in the district about what's going on in my school, I have a bird's eye view of exactly what I'm talking about.
From the moment I came on board at Centerville, I just, it immediately felt like home. And, you know, the values that are, that teachers hold here are aligned with my own. And so here at Centerville, we believe that we create the conditions for students to thrive and that we are in control of that. And really leaning into, again, what is best for kids. And so that's what I'm all about. It's been a great fit since I started.
This is a rewarding job. I would literally do it for free. And so even when it's been a long, challenging day, I pride myself in being able to do it again.
When I was in fifth grade, my mom pulled me from public school and I was homeschooled up until graduation. Once we were down here, years later, I actually came to get information about Midland's Tech and wanted to go and found out that the high school diploma that I received wasn't good. I started in the middle of November and I was done with my GED in mid-March.
Her journey kind of encapsulates all of the services that we can provide here. So Lindsay joined our program in the 24-25 school year working on her GED. She had a barrier to childcare as something that could potentially limit her access to our program. So we partnered with our folks here in the Family Center with Ms. Ziegler and she took care of Lindsay's daughter.
She would come every day with me and I would drop her off at childcare. It's just right down the hall. And she absolutely loved it. I remember when I actually finished and got my GED, she was so upset that, you know, we weren't going to come here anymore.
Lindsay is a true testimony of what the Family Center does. She is one of many success stories here at the Family Center. Her desire to want to do better for her children and her family is truly inspiring. And it's been amazing in my role to see her. It just shows that with the right support, you can really achieve anything.
When you look at the services that we provide, six months, I think, is the youngest that they'll take them to the childcare center. And then our oldest participant in our ESL and GED program this past year was 73 years old. So you're right, it is a wide gap of community service that we have here at Northlake and Adult Education.
Towards the end of getting my GED, I was already getting enrolled in Midland's Tech for phlebotomy and doing my clinicals.
I just love how they can do everything under one roof. You can get your GED or your high school diploma and then you can come here and start working towards a training certificate and/or on the academic side towards an academic certificate or your associate's degree.
I know that there were so many times that I couldn't have made it over the hump without them. And so I am just so grateful to all these people that have encouraged me.
Come be the one who helps our school run smoothly and efficiently.
Come be the one who greets students and family with a smile every day.
Come be the one who goes above and beyond to help our students and staff succeed.
Come be the one who serves me delicious and nutritious meals and makes sure every student is well fed.
Come be the one who makes learning fun and makes me love coming to school.
Come be the one who makes sure our schools are clean and safe.
And the one who makes sure our schools are in tip-top shape.
Come be the one who keeps me healthy and safe.
Come be the one who greets me with a smile at the bus stop and safely transports me to and from school. And the one who makes sure I get to my game on time.
Come be the one who challenges me to think critically and encourages me to never give up on my dreams.
Come be the one who makes it possible for all students to learn and grow.
Come be the one who supports me in the classroom and helps me reach my full potential.
Come be the one who makes our schools a special place.
That's why we're committed to providing every student with a world-class education. One that equips them for success in college, career, or military and beyond. To guide that mission, we created the Lexington One Graduate Profile. A clear vision of the skills and mindsets our students need to thrive in their futures.
We listen to our community, families, educators, and students. And together, we identified nine essential competencies for every graduate. We want our students to be knowledgeable, creative, independent, communicators, collaborators, future-ready, responsible, kind, resilient. These aren't just ideals. They shape how we teach, how students learn, and how we help them grow.
Whether they're headed to college, straight into a career, or into military service, the Graduate Profile ensures every student is ready for what's next. At Lexington One, we're not just preparing students for the future, we're helping them build it. Because when our students succeed, we all do. Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools.
We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day. Because when our schools are safe, our students can.
A day in the life of a new principal, every day is different and every day is amazing. I get to come in and meet new students every day. That's my goal, to get to know everyone, the kids at Gilbert Middle School.
You show up every day hoping for the best and usually, you know, what you experience exceeds that expectation. So trying to get in classrooms, see students, be present, that's always my main goal. Of course, there's other things that come along and we have to throw in the mix, but ultimately being with kids is the best part of the day.
The most chaotic rewarding job ever. So, you know, I don't think that I anticipated all of the things that would be thrown at me, but I've had tremendous support from the district and I've been able to just learn a whole lot in this short eight-week span. So it's been absolutely rewarding. I love the children at this school. I absolutely love the teachers here. And it's a joy to come to work.
I think that it's important that the students see you around and get to know you and know who you are and know that you're going to be there for them, but also to get to know the teachers. I think that they're going to be more invested in what you do when you're in the middle of what's going on. And just to know what's going on in the classrooms. So when I'm talking to the community members, parents, or anybody else in the district about what's going on in my school, I have a bird's eye view of exactly what I'm talking about.
From the moment I came on board at Centerville, I just, it immediately felt like home. And, you know, the values that are, that teachers hold here are aligned with my own. And so here at Centerville, we believe that we create the conditions for students to thrive and that we are in control of that. And really leaning into, again, what is best for kids. And so that's what I'm all about. It's been a great fit since I started.
This is a rewarding job. I would literally do it for free. And so even when it's been a long, challenging day, I pride myself in being able to do it again. And so even when it's been a long, challenging day, I pride myself in being able to do it again.
Salta, salta, salta!
¿Qué podemos hacer? Y así intentar.
Sí, sí me gusta.
Con centenas.
Digo felicunio, cientos... Diez...
¡Vaya, mira!
¡Mejoré, hola! ¿Qué están haciendo?
When I was in fifth grade, my mom pulled me from public school and I was homeschooled, up until graduation. Once we were down here, years later, I actually came to get information about Midland's Tech and wanted to go, and found out that the high school diploma that I received wasn't good. I started in the middle of November, and I was done with my GED in mid-March.
Her journey kind of encapsulates all of the services that we can provide here. So Lindsay joined our program in the 24-25 school year, working on her GED. She had a barrier to childcare as something that could potentially limit her access to our program. So we partnered with our folks here at the Family Center with Ms. Ziegler, and she took care of Lindsay's daughter.
She would come every day with me, and I would drop her off at childcare. It's just right down the hall. And she absolutely loved it. I remember when I actually finished and got my GED, she was so upset that, you know, we weren't going to come here anymore.
Lindsay is a true testimony of what the Family Center does. She is one of many success stories here at the Family Center. Her desire to want to do better for her children and her family is truly inspiring. And it's been amazing in my role to see her. It just shows that with the right support, you can really achieve anything.
And when you look at the services that we provide, six months, I think, is the youngest that they'll take them to the childcare center. And then our oldest participant in our ESL and GED program this past year was 73 years old. So you're right, it is a wide gap of community service that we have here at Northlake in Adult Education.
Towards the end of getting my GED, I was already getting enrolled in Midland's Tech for phlebotomy and doing my clinicals.
I just love how they can do everything under one roof. You can get your GED or your high school diploma, and then you can come here and start working towards a training certificate and/or on the academic side, towards an academic certificate or your associate's degree.
I know that there were so many times that I couldn't have made it over the hump without them. And so I am just so grateful to all these people that have encouraged me.
Come be the one who helps our school run smoothly and efficiently.
Come be the one who greets students and family with a smile every day.
Come be the one who goes above and beyond to help our students and staff succeed.
Come be the one who serves me delicious and nutritious meals and makes sure every student is well fed.
Come be the one who makes learning fun and makes me love coming to school.
Come be the one who makes sure our schools are clean and safe and the one who makes sure our schools are in tip-top shape.
Come be the one who keeps me healthy and safe.
Come be the one who greets me with a smile at the bus stop and safely transports me to and from school. And the one who makes sure I get to my game on time.
Come be the one who challenges me to think critically and encourages me to never give up on my dreams.
Come be the one who makes it possible for all students to learn and grow.
Come be the one who supports me in the classroom and helps me reach my full potential.
Come be the one who makes our schools a special place.
Here in Lexington One, we're preparing students to learn, grow, and excel. That's why we're committed to providing every student with a world-class education, one that equips them for success in college, career, or military, and beyond. To guide that mission, we created the Lexington One Graduate Profile, a clear vision of the skills and mindsets our students need to thrive in their futures.
We listen to our community, families, educators, and students. And together, we identified nine essential competencies for every graduate. We want our students to be knowledgeable, creative, independent, communicators, collaborators, future-ready, responsible, kind, resilient. These aren't just ideals, they shape how we teach, how students learn, and how we help them grow.
Whether they're headed to college, straight into a career, or into military service, the Graduate Profile ensures every student is ready for what's next. At Lexington One, we're not just preparing students for the future, we're helping them build it. Because when our students succeed, we all do. Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools. We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day. Because when our schools are safe, our students can.
Win!
A day in the life of a new principal. Every day is different, and every day is amazing. I get to come in and meet new students every day. That's my goal, to get to know everyone, the kids at Gilbert Middle School.
You show up every day, hoping for the best. And usually, you know, what you experience exceeds that expectation. So trying to get in classrooms, see students, be present, that's always my main goal. Of course, there's other things that come along and we have to throw in the mix, but ultimately, being with kids is the best part of the day.
The most chaotic, rewarding job ever. So, you know, I don't think that I anticipated all of the things that would be thrown at me. But I've had tremendous support from the district, and I've been able to just learn a whole lot in this short eight-week span. So it's been absolutely rewarding. I love the children at this school. I absolutely love the teachers here. And it's a joy to come to work.
I think that it's important that the students see you around, and get to know you, and know who you are, and know that you're going to be there for them. But also to get to know the teachers. I think that they're going to be more invested in what you do when you're in the middle of what's going on. And just to know what's going on in the classrooms. So when I'm talking to the community members, parents, or anybody else in the district about what's going on in my school, I have a bird's eye view of exactly what I'm talking about.
From the moment I came on board at Centerville, I just, it immediately felt like home. And, you know, the values that are, that teachers hold here are aligned with my own. And so here at Centerville, we believe that we create the conditions for students to thrive, and that we're in control of that. And really leaning into, again, what is best for kids. And so that's what I'm all about. And it's been a great fit since I started.
This is a rewarding job. I would literally do it for free. And so even when it's been a long, challenging day, I pride myself in being able to do it again.
Salta, salta, salta!
¿Qué podemos hacer? Y así intentar.
Sí, sí me gusta.
Con centenas.
Digo felicunio, cientos... Diez...
¡Vaya, mira!
¡Mejoré, hola! ¿Qué están haciendo?
When I was in fifth
When I was in fifth grade, my mom pulled me from public school and I was homeschooled up until graduation. Once we were down here, years later, I actually came to get information about Midland's Tech and wanted to go, and found out that the high school diploma that I received wasn't good. I started in the middle of November, and I was done with my GED in mid-March.
Her journey kind of encapsulates all of the services that we can provide here. So Lindsay joined our program in the 24-25 school year working on her GED. She had a barrier to childcare as something that could potentially limit her access to our program. So we partnered with our folks here at the Family Center with Ms. Ziegler, and she took care of Lindsay's daughter.
She would come every day with me, and I would drop her off at childcare. It's just right down the hall. And she absolutely loved it. I remember when I actually finished and got my GED, she was so upset that, you know, we weren't going to come here anymore.
Lindsay is a true testimony of what the Family Center does. She is one of many success stories here at the Family Center. Her desire to want to do better for her children and her family is truly inspiring, and it's been amazing in my role to see her. It just shows that with the right support, you can really achieve anything.
When you look at the services that we provide, six months, I think, is the youngest that they'll take them to the childcare center. And then our oldest participant in our ESL and GED program this past year was 73 years old. So you're right, it is a wide gap of community service that we have here at North Lake in Adult Education.
Towards the end of getting my GED, I was already getting enrolled in Midland's Tech for phlebotomy and doing my clinicals.
I just love how they can do everything under one roof. You can get your GED or your high school diploma, and then you can come here and start working towards a training certificate or, and/or on the academic side, towards an academic certificate or your associate's degree.
I know that there were so many times that I couldn't have made it over the hump without them. And so I am just so grateful to all these people that have encouraged me.
Come be the one who helps our school run smoothly and efficiently.
Come be the one who greets students and family with a smile every day.
Come be the one who goes above and beyond to help our students and staff succeed.
Come be the one who serves me delicious and nutritious meals and makes sure every student is well fed.
Come be the one who makes learning fun and makes me love coming to school.
Come be the one who makes sure our schools are clean and safe, and the one who makes sure our schools are in tip-top shape.
Come be the one who keeps me healthy and safe.
Come be the one who greets me with a smile at the bus stop and safely transports me to and from school, and the one who makes sure I get to my game on time.
Come be the one who challenges me to think critically and encourages me to never give up on my dreams.
Come be the one who makes it possible for all students to learn and grow.
Come be the one who supports me in the classroom and helps me reach my full potential.
Come be the one who makes our schools a special place.
Here in Lexington One, we're preparing students to learn, grow, and excel. That's why we're committed to providing every student with a world-class education, one that equips them for success in college, career, or military, and beyond. To guide that mission, we created the Lexington One Graduate Profile, a clear vision of the skills and mindsets our students need to thrive in their futures.
We listen to our community, families, educators, and students, and together, we identified nine essential competencies for every graduate. We want our students to be knowledgeable, creative, independent, communicators, collaborators, future-ready, responsible, kind, resilient. These aren't just ideals, they shape how we teach, how students learn, and how we help them grow.
Whether they're headed to college, straight into a career, or into military service, the Graduate Profile ensures every student is ready for what's next. At Lexington One, we're not just preparing students for the future, we're helping them build it. Because when our students succeed, we all do.
Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn executive session and return to general session.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. I call to order the October 21st, 2025 Board Meeting. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. The district tapes the meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. Will you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding certified staff recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year?
Madam Chair, I move to approve three certified staff recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion related to a contractual matter for the 2018 bond referendum audit?
Madam Chair, let me get my computer. Hold on.
We are using new software tonight, so please bear with us as we are practicing navigating it.
Yes. Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the intent to award the RFP from the 2018 Bond Referendum Transaction and Project Review in the amount not to exceed $91,000 from the general fund balance as discussed in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. At this time, we are going to open it up for discussion, and I'm looking around the room for Ms. Marsh. Oh, right for... All right. All right, turn it over to you.
All right, I'm just waiting for them. Okay, there we go. So, good evening. For those of you that don't know me in the audience, I'm Elizabeth Marsh. I'm Lexington One's Procurement Director. This evening, I'm going to walk, take you through the procurement journey. We'll start with the very beginning with the process. So, this is a presentation I put together to, so everyone will know the process that we went through. There we go. So, on March 25th, 2025, the Board of Trustees approved a motion. This motion was created, created a committee tasked with developing a request for proposal, or RFP, for an external audit linked to the 2018 bond referendum. This lists all of the projects that they were going to look at. So crafting the request for proposal was akin to constructing a launchpad for our mission. Our subcommittee dedicated substantial effort engaging in intensive sessions to meticulously refine the details. Thorough discussions, the subcommittee realized that more information was necessary to produce a results-driven RFP. The choice was made to issue an RFI request for information. So diving into our first substantial step forward, the feedback we received from the RFI was incredibly enlightening. It offered us essential insights that allowed the subcommittee to reconsider and refine the scope of work for the final RFP. This feedback was more than just a collection of opinions. It was a roadmap showing us how to better align the RFP with our goals. By taking these insights on board, the subcommittee was not just responding to feedback. They were actively reshaping their approach to ensure that the final RFP met the real questions and answers of the board and the residents. As the subcommittee prepared for the upcoming work session, they were more equipped to create a scope of work that covered their objectives. The subcommittee had a final work session to finalize the scope of work for the RFP that they believed was clear, concise, and included the information necessary for interested firms to provide proposals and costs. The review and initial meeting process began with proposal submissions assessed for compliance by the procurement officer. I organized a charging meeting outlining guidelines and emphasizing confidentiality. And at the meeting's end, members signed key documents: a nondisclosure agreement, a confidentiality agreement, a procurement integrity agreement, and a guideline document. After collecting signed forms, members received copies of the proposal for independent review and scoring. Second meeting was scheduled for 10:02 to discuss the findings and finalize scores. So we're going to dive into the final stages of our procurement process. So the discussion and scoring process was a collective effort where evaluators provided individual scores. These scores helped us pinpoint the highest-ranked proposal, ensuring that our decision was both fair and transparent. Once the top proposal was identified, I, as a procurement officer, initiated key negotiations. This included discussions around cost and scope, which are critical to align both parties' expectations. It's essential to understand that these negotiations are not just about numbers, but about creating a partnership that benefits all. This step sets the stage for the upcoming award issuance and ultimately, the successful execution of the project. So what's next? So should the board pass the motion this evening, I will post the intent to award on Lexington One's website. The Lexington One Procurement Code allows for any vendor that may feel that they have been aggrieved in the process in the award of a contract to submit an intent to protest within seven business days. Once the seven business days have passed, the award finalizes and the procurement department issues a purchase order. It is Lexington One's policy to make sure that no work can begin without a fully executed purchase order. So the procurement officer will schedule a kickoff after that. It'll be a kickoff meeting with the contractor and Lexington One, and the contract is officially turned over to whoever is the point of contact. And these are procurement terms that you need to know. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marsh. Board, any other questions before we vote? All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve the... Mr. Rice, can you just read your motion one more time and then we'll vote?
Wait as I refresh. You got it, yes. Thank you, Ms. Shealy. So the motion was that the board approve the intent to award the RFP from the 2018 Bond Referendum Transaction and Project Review in the amount not to exceed $91,000 from the general fund balance as discussed in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And we had a second by Ms. Shealy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have no other items stemming from executive session, so we now get to move on to the fun part of the evening that most of you are here for, and that's our honors and achievements. So when you came in, you probably saw these proof positive newsletters out there, so make sure you grab one that highlights our honorees. Once we finish, we will give our honorees a chance to leave before we resume the rest of our meeting. Dr. Price, will you please step down front? We have several honorees tonight, so when you hear your name, just come to the front and stand up here as we tell the audience all about you and your achievements, and smile for a picture. First, we are excited to recognize a large number of high-achieving students who received the maximum raw score on SC Ready, either in math or English, English Language Arts last year. The South Carolina College and Career Ready Assessments, or SC Ready, program is a statewide assessment administered to students in grades three through eight as required by the Education Accountability Act. Please come forward to take your picture with your school group and Dr. Price. From Beechwood Middle School, we have Greta Altman, Brianna Barion, Logan Blackledge, Luke Corwin, Elias Farrell, Victor Katz, Sophia Lee, Allison Link. And all of y'all stay down here together. Don't go back to your seats. Aion Patel, Henry Rollins, Landon Rupel, Logan Rupel, Cassidy Schinkie, Wyatt Trotter, and Henry Humans. Ms. Serantopoulos, you have a lot of amazing students at Beechwood, don't you? Scooch closer. All right, congratulations, Beechwood students. Next up, from Carolina Springs Elementary, we have Cynthia Delgado, Harrison Fisher, and Camden Reynolds. Oh, come on down. Congratulations, Carolina Springs. From Centerville Elementary, we have Jasmine Brewer. Is Jasmine here? Well, congratulations, Jasmine. From Deerfield Elementary, we have Brooklyn Corbett, Adele Matheny, and Jonathan Spensley. It's like they planned to coordinate for a family picture. All right, congrats, here we go. From Gilbert Middle School, we have Boaz Head. Is Boaz here? Well, congratulations, Boaz. All right, we have another big group. From Lake Murray Elementary School, we have August Baxley, Avery Brannon, Gianella Elizondo, Gatlin Kelly, Sahil Pedapali, Lander Pogue, Alvaro Ramis, Vilaro, sorry. Maida Shrirom, Kathleen Strickland, and Ryan Sweeney. Oh, one more picture. Great work, guys. From Lakeside Middle School, we have Jason DeMasters, Trisha Patel, Nina Price, Lena Rankin, Nollin Shinoy, and Ella Varez. I feel like we should clap while they're walking down. From Lexington High School, we have Zachariah Albardish, Emma Chuk, and Kennedy Jones. From Meadow Glen Elementary, we have Arishka Arvind, Maxwell Baker, Cole Segalas, Silas Finch, Hunter Harbaugh, and Liam Hogan. I might be missing somebody. Hold on, let me turn the next page. Oh, yep. Keishu Wong, Daniel Wong, Hayes Rayly, Elise Witsett, and Evie Willis. Next, from Meadow Glen Middle, we have Keshav Arun, Piper Cook, Monroe Cox, Kashi Darji... Or G, sorry. Wilson Hawkins, Jackson Holloway, Kamaya Todagiri, Allison McGee, Ruhi Patel, Vivan Podar, Jessie Sims, Derek Smith, Joyce Way, Celine Wong, Charlotte Young, and Ronan Young. From Midway Elementary, we have Ariat Kari, Rea Sarikanda, Emma Scott, Rvi Shaw, and Emma Jen Stone. From New Providence Elementary, we have Cooper Clifford, Heath Kanig, and Elliot Stewart. From Oak Grove Elementary, we have Keats Kabani. From Pleasant Hill Elementary, we have Connor Bear and Grayson Spicer. Here he comes. From Pleasant Hill Middle, we have Chloe Clemency, Jeremy Hare, Darby Kaiser, Eliza Pitts, Charles Small, and Joshua Stokes. From Red Bank Elementary, we have Brian Fletcher and Eloise Seagraves. From Riverbluff High, we have Owen Sims and Peter Wong. From Rocky Creek Elementary, we have Britton Faust, Madeline Gilbert, Lane Gilfillan, Alexandra McLeod, Bentley Sanderson, and Sawyer Williamson. From Saxagotha Elementary, we have Silas Bumgarner, Grayson Clark, and Julia Massey. From Whitenole Middle, we have Roman Difatirichi. Congrats, Roman. All right, so congratulations to all of you on this outstanding achievement. One more clap for all those SC-ready kids. We would now like to honor a group of students who demonstrated remarkable skill, focus, and teamwork. Please join us in celebrating the Pillion Middle School archery team who shot their way to a first-place victory at the 2025 Middle School IBO Outdoor World Championship for the second year in a row. This team is represented tonight by the following members. Please come forward as your name is called. Eden Baskin, Adeline Carter, Aubrey Joy, Madeline Maroney, Paisley Montgomery, Annabelle Russell, Delilah Williams, and Coaches Maria Boland and David Taylor. While they take their picture, I'm going to tell you a little more about them. This team also earned first place in the Three Star Challenge, which recognizes teams and archers with the highest collective scores from the state, national, and world tournaments. In addition to the team's incredible success, we have one individual champion to recognize. Delilah Williams not only contributed to her team's gold medal, but was also crowned the 2025 Female Middle School Outdoor World Champion. Congratulations to the entire team on their outstanding achievements. Next, we are excited to recognize the artistry and talent of the students who competed at the State Fair Art Competition. Please join us as we call your names. Stay up front for one group photo of all of our State Fair winners. In the 2D art category, we have Chitra Chirani, Chintada from Beachwood Middle, who won at the 5th grade level for art created last year in art teacher Lisa Thomas's class at Lake Murray Elementary. Here she comes. Joyce Way from Meadow Glen Middle placed first in the Grade 7 category with art created in Ms. Caroline Butcher's class. Adam Morris, Vi Fuertapachico, from Pillion High, won first place in the 8th grade level for art created last year in Dr. Kizzy Gibson's class at Pillion Middle. Whitenole Elementary's Hadley Temples took home first place in the 3D art category at the 2nd grade level for a piece created outside of school. Riverbluff High's Olive Gammon took home first place in photography at the 12th grade level. She is taught by Carly Myers. Lexington One students also brought home three of the nine Best in Show Awards in the entire state. Meadow Glen Elementary's Yuyaw Wang won the Best in Show Award for Elementary 2D Art with the art created in Ms. Deborah Vernon's art class. Midway Elementary's Carter Hazelrigg won Best in Show in the 3D art category for a piece created outside of school. Lexington and Lexington High's Gianna Termini also took home the Best in Show Award for high school 3D art with art created in Ms. Anya De- Deg- To- Yu... Ms. D! Is Ms. D. here? Thank you! I apologize if I butchered your name tonight. Yes, oh, right. That's a great idea. Congratulations to all of these artists on this accomplishment. Today, we are thrilled to welcome representatives of our local Michelin plant who are here to present a big check to the Lexington One Educational Foundation. Will the representatives please join Dr. Price up front as I call your names? Nicola Poman Cross? Yes, great, who is the plant manager, and Will Sally, who is the plant quality manager. And representatives of the foundation include Katrina Bryant, who is the foundation vice chair, Lisa Phillips, who is the foundation past chair, Randy Cooper, who is the secretary treasurer, Julie Washburn, who is the foundation executive director, and Mr. Nicholas Pazutti, who is the Lexington One board member and foundation liaison. Each year, while they take a picture, I'm going to tell you more about this. Each year, Michelin demonstrates its ongoing commitment to education and workforce development through a generous $15,000 donation to the Lexington One Educational Foundation. This annual gift supports two incredible programs. The Michelin Golden Apple Teacher Grants, which provide $5,000 for classroom materials and innovative projects, and the Michelin VEX Robotics Grants, which provide $10,000 to help fund our middle and high school robotics teams. These grants make a direct impact on students by funding STEM kits, classroom library books, and hands-on learning tools, and by helping develop career-ready skills in high-tech industries. Thank you, Michelin, for investing in our teachers, students, and future workforce. Oh, actually, yes, yes. Tonight, I'll let you put the check down and then you can walk back up here. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the Lexington One Educational Foundation as it celebrates 30 years of support to Lexington One. Join, well, yes, we can clap for that. Joining us this evening are foundation vice chair Katrina Bryant, past chair Lisa Phillips, secretary treasurer Randy Cooper, board members Angela Dowda, Brandy Kiefer, Melissa Moore, Will Sally, and Chris Shealy, executive director Julie Washburn, retired executive director Connie McFarland, past board members Joyce Carter, Kimberly Freeman, Carl Fulmer, Roger Cooperman, Laura McMahon, and Rosemary Wilson, and our school board liaison, Mr. Nick Pazutti. The educational foundation was authorized by the Board of Trustees in 1994. Before I go further, are there any other current or former board members with us? So like, Mr. Chris Rice, why don't you go stand with him? He's a former chair, I think. The educational foundation was authorized by the Board of Trustees in 1994 with its first official meeting held in September 17, 1995. Founding members included James Compton, Michael Wingard, Michael Shealy, Dr. Lon Hamby, and Richard Hook, who also made the foundation's first donation of $1,000. Since its creation, the foundation has grown into an essential partner, providing educational and need-based grants that directly benefit our students, employees, and schools. To date, the foundation has awarded $567,000 in scholarships to 735 graduating seniors, given more than $213,000 in Bucks for Books grants to strengthen literacy, funded over $215,000 in innovation grants for creative classroom projects, honored the top 10% of seniors for 21 years through the Celebration of Excellence in Education, and supported families and staff through Leap Emergency, International Teacher, Caring Heart, and CATS-KIT Cancer Grants. All of this is possible because of the foundation's dedicated board, staff, and generous donors. Please join me in celebrating 30 years of impact, partnership, and excellence, and let's give a big round of applause to the Lexington One Educational Foundation. All right. Thank you all for taking time to recognize our amazing students, staff, and schools. We love sharing these achievements with you. October is National Principals Month, and we know we have the best of the best here in Lexington One. We want to recognize all principals in the audience today, so please stand while we applaud you. Now, if you need a moment to leave, we will give you a quick and quiet moment to do that now. All right, we're going to keep going with our meeting, so we'll give people a couple minutes to, well, a couple seconds to slip on out. I know. Okay, I think we can move on. Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizen's participation period during board meetings. If you are unable to attend this evening or uncomfortable addressing the board in person, you may reach out to the board by email, telephone, or mail. Our contact information is available on the Lexington One website. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs. You may not speak about or name specific individuals, whether students, or school, or district staff. Failure to follow this rule will result in immediately loss of opportunity to speak. The board will not reply to your remarks or take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the board for up to three minutes. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to Ms. Halliday up here in the front of the room, and she will distribute them. Do not clap, or please do not clap or make any comments either while an individual speaks or after he/she finishes. So the first person we have tonight is Mr. John Norton, here to address special needs.
My name is John Norton. I have six children who have graduated from Lexington One, four of them. I have a 7th grader who is thriving here, and I also value this district and the quality of education my children have received.
Mr. Norton, I'm sorry, we can't, it's a lot of feedback, and we just can't hear what you're saying, so if we could start his time over.
This thing came off too.
Do you want to just turn it off and hand it mine?
And I don't think the on-timer is showing, so we've got to turn it off here. My wife and I have six children, four of whom have graduated from Lexington One. We have a 7th grader who is striving here. We also value this district and the quality of education that my children have received. However, my 5-year-old in Lexington Two Special Needs Education Program has shown a very different side of the system. In 3K and 4K, his experience was excellent, the teachers were great. But in Level Two program, now spans kindergarten through 2nd grade, and the real issue is teacher-to-student ratio. Many classes are overcrowded, making it hard to give these children the attention and support they need. When one or two students have a behavioral outburst, it often triggers others, creating multiple meltdowns that can happen several times a day. We've seen this firsthand. One day at lunch, a child had an outburst, and within minutes, three or four other children also had meltdowns, disrupting the entire lunch period. I'm sure the same pattern carries over into the classrooms, making it even harder for teachers to manage and teach effectively. Our special education teachers, aides, and staff are doing an amazing job under these conditions. I also want to recognize our principal, who has done everything possible to support these classrooms, rearranging staff and shifting coverage to help wherever is needed. We truly appreciate those efforts, but even with all that's being done, the need outweighs the resources. We've also learned that
I'm here tonight because I recently discovered that science has not been taught at all since the school started more than two months ago. It should have been part of the second nine weeks instruction, but it was completely skipped over, and families were led to believe that it was being taught. Throughout this time, we received newsletters saying that students were working through science lessons, taking quizzes, and preparing for assessments. Those statements were simply not true. As a parent, I became concerned early in the year when my daughter began bringing home unusually low test scores. I reached out to her teacher and later spoke with the assistant principal, trying to understand what was going on and how we could support her. After several attempts to communicate, I realized this wasn't about my daughter's ability or effort, it was about a complete lack of instruction in one of the core subjects she's required to learn. Eventually, I received a letter from the school confirming that no parent, what no parent should ever hear, that science had not been taught at all. And the only reason this came to light was because I asked why there were no science grades posted. What troubles me the most is that this happened. It's how it went unnoticed for so long. How can a required subject be skipped entirely for more than two months without the administrators or district realizing it? How can newsletters continue to go out claiming science is being taught when it isn't? This is not about attacking anyone personally, it's about accountability, oversight, and transparency. Parents trust that when we send our kids to school, they receive a complete and honest education. That trust has been broken. So tonight, I'm asking a few things of y'all. I did receive today the agenda, the timeline for making up science, but how will this not take away from the other subjects? How will the district ensure this never happens again at Deerfield or anywhere else? What systems will be put in place to verify that every subject is actually being taught as required? And when science was skipped over and social studies wasn't being taught, what exactly was being covered in the classroom during that time? I want to know, the curriculum says that social studies and science swaps every nine weeks. I appreciate the hard-working teachers and administrators in our district, but this situation highlights a serious breakdown in communication and oversight that cannot be ignored. Our children deserve better. They deserve honesty, accountability, and the assurance that every subject, including science, is being taught with integrity. The school says they're fixing it. How do we trust that's happening? I've taken words before, I've listened, and clearly, that was a lie. Accountability is my main issue, and I don't like being lied to as a parent who has a couple of kids in the school system. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right, we are gonna move on to 9.0, which is new business, and I will turn it over to Dr. Shane Phillips to discuss state assessment results and strategic plan goal updates.
I'm not supposed to touch the mic. Okay. Okay, let's see. Okay, oops. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Price, members of the Board. I'm very pleased tonight to share with you some of our released standardized test score information related to our strategic plan and student achievement indicators. So before I get started, I want to point out that on each of these slides, which I realize are like really small for y'all, I think, I've included on the right-hand side the overall overarching district aim at the top and the specific strategic plan goal at the bottom so that you can reference that as related to the specific test that we're talking about. So we'll start off tonight with SC Ready. Across the state, there were notable increases in ELA proficiency. This trend is reflected in our local district scores as well. This is in part due to some changes in the cut points in the test. So you can see on this chart how we compare by grade level to the state. So you have each grade level represented there. As you can see, in the dark blue is the district, and in the light blue is the state, and then the last set of columns are the total for the district. So as a total for the district, 68% of our students scored either meets or exceeds on SC Ready compared to 60% at the state level. When we switch this over to math, we see a similar trend, with each grade level surpassing the state proficiency with right at half of our students demonstrating or exceeding that proficiency as a total. So 50% for the district, 44% for the state. And then finally, with science, which as a reminder is only in grades four and six, the district continues to outpace the state with about 54% of our students scoring meets or exceeds expectations. So now let's kind of look at this over time. If we look at these score trends since the 2022 administration, you can see consistent upward trends. As a reminder, the trend in ELA is a bit steeper, which may be due in part to the change in the cut points. So it's important this year to recognize that in ELA, we're setting a new baseline. Because of the change in standards, the change in cut points, it's important to make sure that we establish this as the starting point for looking at growth moving forward.
So, quick pause.
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying, moving forward, we're pretty much gonna ignore 22, 23, 24 because it's a different cut score?
So, I would not say ignore it necessarily, but...
Well, you can't come here.
You can't look at that jump with any degree of reliability. What we can look at, though, is the difference between how much we grew and how much the state grew. And so I think that's important to look at as well. But those cut points did change, and we did go up at a steeper rate than the state.
Is there a way to know what that number would be with last year's cut score? I'm just curious.
No.
No, you can't compare it.
Yes, I could go back and look at last year's cut score and go back and recalculate. What I can say is...
There would still be growth. There would still be growth.
Yes, and they still measure on, which, the report cards have been delayed for a little bit, as you guys are probably aware. We anticipate, based on what we've calculated and what we've seen, that we're going to see growth in ELA and the other subjects, math as well. But they can't even apply the entire student progress model to ELA this year simply because of essentially two different cut points, and it just wouldn't be meaningful comparison between the two years. So they are still including that in the student progress, but only partially. Does that make sense? And I can go back and take a look at what it would have looked like under the old cut scores as well.
Madam Chair, at the risk of sounding very ignorant, what is a cut score?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good question, excellent question. So, there's a scale score for this that underlies the does-not-meet, meets, and so forth. On that scale, certain scores represent the cut points for going from one level to another. So there's a cut point for going from does-not-meet to approaches, from approaches to meets, meets to exceeds. So that's what I'm talking about. So they, those cut points have been sort of the same over time. With new standards, new instructional materials in ELA, they went back and readjusted that scale based on the new material, based on pilot testing, field testing items, and set new cut points.
Were they lowered, or like, how did that look?
So, yes, they were lowered a little bit.
Quick question, and I don't expect the answer tonight, but Lexington One, I expect us to be better than state. If anything, maybe top quartile at least. And so I love seeing kind of growth over time, even though comparability is not easy right now, but maybe in the future, can you share top quartile as a comparative to see, are we in there? Or, you know...
Stand by.
Okay, great. Thank you. I set you up for that, just saying.
You did, thank you, teed that up for me. Okay, so just to recap, really, the scores that we see this year are actually very exciting for us. We surpassed the state, obviously, in every subject and at every grade level, often substantially. And we're really excited about our improvements in math, since that's been an area of emphasis. We're also showing success in science with about an eight-point increase since the last time it was counted, which was the 2023 test. When compared to all districts in the state, Lexington One ranks sixth in ELA and 15th in math. And then when we compare the district to districts of similar demographics, so basing that on poverty level, we also see some encouraging results. So among 12 schools with similar demographics, Lexington One ranks third in ELA and sixth in math. And then among the 10 largest districts in the state by population number of kids tested on these tests, Lexington One ranks first in ELA and fourth in math. So not exactly quartile, but gives you some comparison to where we stand within the state on those tests.
Absolutely, what I was looking for. Can you repeat that last one real quick?
Sure. Among the 10 largest districts in the state, Lexington One ranks first in ELA and fourth in math. So not exactly quartile, but gives you some comparison to where we stand within the state on those tests.
Absolutely, what I was looking for. Can you repeat that last one real quick?
Sure. Among the 10 largest districts in the state, Lexington One ranks first in ELA and fourth in math.
Thank you. Can you, do you know what districts those are by chance?
Oh, man, yes, but not right now.
I see how...
I have a whole list of them. But, so, the largest, and I'm gonna just kind of shoot from the hip here with some of them, the largest is gonna be Greenville, Charleston, Ori, us...
Greenville, Charleston, Ori, Berkeley, Richland Two, Lexington One, Dorchester Two, Richland One, and then it gets fuzzy for the last two of the top 10, but there's eight out of the top 10.
I don't, I don't, it might actually be. I will get you the list, I promise. And then the poverty one has a lot of those same ones in it, but it has things like Anderson, a couple Anderson districts. Dorchester's in there, Berkeley, I think, is in there, but I'll get you that list.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Good job.
All right, so, let's move on to end-of-course. So in all end-of-course subjects, and, Miss Shealy, I'm gonna tell you, I don't have that for end-of-course, but I can get it. All right, so in all end-of-course subjects, the district surpasses the state on the pass rate of exams, with our highest pass rate being English Two with an 88% pass rate for that exam. When we look at proficiency rates, which proficiency is considered scoring C or higher on those exams, the same trend holds. We outperform the state in each subject, and English Two remains our highest subject at 74% proficiency. And we can look at trends again here. So you can see that in all the subjects except English, we have a little bit of an upward trend. English took a slight hit this year, and again, we did have new standards, new instructional materials. There were no changes to scale on the end-of-course exam, no changes to that test, but new standards, new instructional materials. So we were back down to where we were the year before on the pass rate for that. And if we look at the proficiency rate, the same pattern holds true with biology dropping just a smidge, and English dropping as well, algebra and US history actually taking a pretty good little jump there from last year.
So you know you set the bar high with that first section, so maybe next time, that comparison with the, you know, where we fall compared to other top schools would be great. Thank you.
I got you. I can do that. So, high school students in Lexington One continue to make gains on our end-of-course tests. We do acknowledge that dip in English Two scores potentially due to those changing standards and instructional materials. Overall, however, our performance suggests we continue to prepare students for success in high school and beyond. And so our final test that we're gonna talk about is the South Carolina Career Readiness Test. This test is given as one indicator of college or career readiness. It is, we look at the percent of students scoring a Level Three or higher on four subtests. So those subtests are reading, math, data analysis, and soft skills. These scores, both statewide and locally, were a bit lower, and they seem to be trending lower over time. But again, we outpaced the state pretty substantially, nine points in reading, and then, excuse me, and in math, we surpassed the state by 11 points, but we're down a little bit from the previous couple of years. Then again, about nine points in data analysis over the state, with again, that sort of downward trend both locally and at the state level over time. And then on the soft skills test, where we surpassed the state by 10 points, and again, down a little bit from the previous year. So overall, we are happy that we continue to outpace the state in each of those areas, and it's important to remember that while this assessment is a tool for determining career readiness, it is only one tool. We, students have a ton of opportunities to demonstrate either college or career readiness or both through a variety of avenues. So it's important to remember that they have lots of different opportunities to do that, and these results do reinforce our graduate profiles' focus of ensuring that students are leaving our district prepared for what comes after high school. Okay, at this time, I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
Dr. Phillips, just one question. Looking at your career readiness charts, it looked like they have all continued to decline. Is there an explanation for why there's a decline in every particular category from year over year?
Not that I'm able to provide you at this time. I'll defer possibly to Dr. Gaskins here on that. I feel excited I got to call her, Dr. Gaskins, by the way. But again, we outpaced the state pretty substantially, nine points in reading. And then, excuse me, and in math, we surpassed the state by 11 points, but we're down a little bit from the previous couple of years. Then again, about nine points in data analysis over the state, with again, that, that sort of downward trend both locally and at the state level over time. And then on the soft skills test, where, where we surpassed the state by 10 points. And again, down a little bit from the previous year. So overall, we are happy that we continue to outpace the state in each of those areas. And it's important to remember that while this assessment is a tool for determining career readiness, it is only one tool. We, students have a ton of opportunities to demonstrate, demonstrate either college or career readiness or both through a variety of avenues. So it's important to remember that they have lots of different opportunities to do that. And these results do reinforce our graduate profiles' focus of ensuring that students are leaving our district prepared for what comes after high school. Okay, at this time, I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
Dr. Phillips, just one question. Looking at your career readiness charts, it looked like they have all continued to decline. Is there an explanation for why there's a decline in every particular category from year over year?
Not that I'm able to provide you at this time. I'll defer possibly to Dr. Gaskins here on that. I feel excited that I got to call her, Dr. Gaskins, by the way. You gotta come up here. Don't touch the microphone.
We're gonna pause for a second. He kind of stole the thunder for later in the meeting. But Mrs. Mary Gaskins is now as a Friday Dr. Gaskins, so congratulations.
I appreciate all of your support along the way, and I am glad to finally have that title. Thank you. So we know in '24, we had a new assessment. So the assessment changed, the career readiness assessment changed between '23 and '24. So we understood that dip because sometimes that happens when we have a new assessment. We have inquired at the state level around why we saw the dip again this year, because it is a pattern in every category across the state. And really haven't been able to, to hear an explanation of the why. It is something we will continue to monitor. And I want to reiterate something that Dr. Phillips said. There are other ways that students can achieve career readiness. And I do think when we see our CCR levels later, we're gonna see an increase overall. That's our prediction based on the data we've studied of college and career readiness, even though we saw a little dip on this particular assessment.
Madam Chair, Dr. Gaskins, I think this may be you. This isn't a Lexington One thing. It's a trend if you look back at the SC Ready numbers for ELA and math. Everything in Six, Seven, and Eight takes a pretty deep dive, both at the state level, but also in Lexington One. Do we know why? Or we don't have an answer from the state?
So when we, when we look at, so ELA stays pretty, pretty steady. There's some dips as you go up. Math is where you really see that. My argument to that would be math is heavily dependent on foundational skills that you get each year. And if you don't get those foundational skills in one year, and you struggle the next year to get those foundational skills because you're being taught grade-level content, which this test is a grade-level test. If you're not spiraling those up, you continue to get more and more behind. And so as you go up in grade, if you're not gathering those foundational skills, then it becomes more and more difficult to achieve that proficiency.
And, and this that we're looking at here, those are different students in fifth grade and sixth grade and seventh grade. So really, if you wanted to paint a big picture, you would take those seventh grade students that we're looking at right here and look at what were their scores when they were in sixth grade and when they were in fifth grade to see if possibly, because those eighth graders were third graders in 2020. And so really, is there that much decline or, do you see what I'm saying?
Right, as a cohort, how did they look over time? Yes, ma'am. And it is a national trend, especially if we look at things like our I-Ready results. We see the same sort of trend across the country in those middle school grades in particular with that decline.
One exciting thing that is not typical for us is we saw a larger percentage increase in middle school math this year than we did in elementary. And so we're very encouraged about all the work we've been doing with your support, with doing really intensive professional learning in the area of math, adding our math coaches at the elementary level. To Dr. Phillips' point, that strong foundation in elementary is essential to middle school success in math because they have to have those foundational skills. And so there is hope in these numbers, even though we are still not satisfied with them.
Speaking of math, can I ask you a quick question? I was under the impression, I guess, with all of the state standards changing and curriculum and all that, that the standards for math change, that's why we had to change the curriculum. But that's not necessarily the case, right? We didn't have to change our math curriculum. We chose to, or what's?
With each new state adoption of standards, they typically fund, if they do get the funding from the General Assembly, new instructional materials that are aligned to the new standards. And so it was a year for a new state adoption for instructional materials. And we had a limited list to choose from based on what had been approved at the state level.
So what we had before, though, was on that list or no?
So it would have been an updated version of it aligned to the new standards.
Okay, so what, so what did we have? Is it this year that we had new math standards or is this year, right? So it's Eureka Math, correct?
In elementary, it is Eureka. In middle and high school, it's lots of different things in high school because of the different courses, but it's Savvas in middle school is the publisher.
Okay, and what did we have in elementary last year?
We had I-Ready.
Okay, so I-Ready, there was, there was still on our list, but it would have just been an updated version. But we chose to go to Eureka?
Yes.
Okay, and can you just remind me why we chose to do Eureka?
We have a textbook adoption committee with representatives from every school that goes through every single option with a rubric to see which one is the best fit aligned to the standards and some other things. Like so for this year, we also looked at our instructional framework that's been adopted to say which of these options would best align with what we expect instruction to look like in Lexington One Two. And it was the one recommended by the committee.
Have we ever talked about perhaps, because I know this year there was a lot of changes, right? Like across the board for our teachers. I'm just wondering, would that be something in the future if we just, if we decided to change our curriculum? Maybe we could just pilot it for a year, or have we ever done that?
Well, once you adopt, it's the one that you are, I don't want to say stuck with, but the one that you've selected for as long as the state funds that particular textbook. So typically, we get new ones every six or seven years. But for like our last language arts adoption, we had it, I think, 14 years. And so we have to be really careful with the choice we make when it's up for adoption because it will be the one we'll be using for quite a while. We don't get to test it out for a year and then adopt a different one the next year.
Okay, thank you.
I probably should have mentioned this earlier. The change that we saw in ELA because of the standards, they'll be doing a similar process for that for math this year on SC Ready because of the change in the standards, change in instructional materials. So I don't know what that change will be on SC Ready, if anything, but it just forewarned, it's likely to happen on math this year. So next year, on next report card, they'll only be able to incorporate math partially in the student progress piece like they're doing ELA this year. Other questions?
Thank you so much. I think we're good.
All right, Ms. Price, are you ready? You are up for the next nine agenda items. So it is the Marathon of Policy First Readings tonight. So we'll try to go easy on you. We'll take one or two at a time.
Here we go.
So we're gonna start with policy GBBAA. GBBAAAR, annual leave bank.
I told Tracy, I have 15 policies in this tiny little podium right here. We're gonna make it work. Okay, so yes, tonight I bring to you just a few policies. I gotta touch the podium just a little bit because I'm tall. I'm gonna get in trouble. I know. All right, so I'm gonna bring you just a few policies. We will talk through, most of these, of course, are due to changes in the Educator Assistance Act, which came to us in July, July 1st of 2025. And it does include a number of changes that are required for our schools and of course for our district. The good thing is that you will see a lot of the things that are in these policies, we were already doing in practice in Lexington One for quite a while. But it certainly is nice to go ahead and get those in writing and to have the support of that behind us in policy. And some of them, even though we didn't have to bring because we were already doing those things, we took advantage of this opportunity to go ahead and, you know, clean up some language, make some language consistent and those types of things. So you'll see that as we kind of go policy by policy. And I think the first one we have up is GBBAA, which is our annual leave bank for illness or accident. And technically, this is the, one of the policies that we did not have to bring because we, we do have this in place. It just was required by the Educator Assistance Act that each district have one in place. Since we had one in place, we didn't technically have to bring it to you. But again, we just wanted to update some language, make sure we were a little bit more consistent with some things. We had some good feedback from you guys to just clean up some things like using words consistently, like donation and contribution, making sure some of those things are aligned. So we're gonna kind of make sure we have that in place. But we just wanted to try to, you'll see some of our strike-throughs or even just changing things like in some places we say employees, in some places we say staff members. So just changing things like that to be consistent, to use the same language throughout. So no major changes there on GBBAA. Let me just keep going. Is that the plan or you didn't just on?
Board, at this time, do you have any comments on this one? I just have one clerical thing I'll email you. It's just a or instead of an of.
Perfect.
Oh, Dr. Price got it.
Okay, perfect. Kimberly sees it. GBBAAAR, of course, is our rule, which kind of outlines the, kind of the ways that we make this happen. And this is the, kind of the way we operate. You can get up to 10 days for a 90-day or less absence when our employees or staff members need that. When you've been absent 20 days or more and have used up your leave. And this just kind of defines the, the guidelines for that. Again, just kind of cleaning up some language here and clarifying some things for our employees, but no major changes to how that kind of works for our, for our leave bank.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Typically with our leave bank, since we already have it established, is it normally depleted typically at the end of the year? Or are there still credits there?
It is not. We have, we have not had to ask for a replenishment like this policy calls for, or we have to go back and ask for employees to give more than one day. As long as I have been here and we checked with payroll just to see, has that happened to their knowledge? That has not happened. So usually when employees are able to give their one day, that has been able to cover all the needs from people who have requested it.
I know you said that there is a limit on the number of days. Did you say 10 days, I think?
Correct.
Could someone give a directed donation? Like, could you, if Ms. Freeman had already missed 10 days, could you say, I want to give her one of my days?
That is not the way our leave bank is set up. At this time, you know, we certainly can look at that if, if that's the pleasure of the board. That does get into a little bit of complications for equity and fairness when you try to decide, you know, who gets those days and how they're distributed. That's a difficult situation to be in, to try to decide. There's a lot of hard hardships that you come across, so. Any questions on that? Okay.
I think we're good to move on to GBC.
All right, GBC is our staff compensation. And again, not a lot of changes here. These are a lot of the things that you see in red, were things that we were already doing. It's just nice to have the model policy to actually put that in writing for us for a change. We do have the element from the Educator, Educator Assistance Act that the board will notify teachers in writing of their employment status before May 1st of each year. And of course, the big piece that is new is the projected salary schedule, which all of you were very gracious in working with us this year and doing that ahead of time. And we were very thankful for that because we feel like that was one reason that we were able to get, you know, great teachers in our schools early this year. And we are hopeful that that will be a great enticement for us this year as well. And of course, it does have that caveat in it that upon completion of the state and local appropriations, teacher will receive that final salary schedule. So if something does change, we do still kind of have that line in there that allows us to make those adjustments if things do change over time. But everything else you see there is kind of just some cleanup and some more changes of things that we wanted to align. We did have some questions about the summer school kind of being removed, and we want to assure people that we, if they see that, we are still paying people if they teach summer school. But we felt like in that particular line, that was an example of compensation. We certainly pay people for a lot of different things that they do outside of the school day. And that's why that paragraph above, we kind of feel like that defines all the different areas that they get paid for. So we wanted to take, we tried to remove a lot of excess things and make things a little bit shorter. And some examples and things you'll see removed just to try to clarify. So glad to answer any questions on GBC.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I, can you, just for our benefit and the public's benefit, how do we pay for summer school? Is it part of their contract? Is it a stipend? What about also like summer curriculum planning and things like that? I just would like to better understand how we compensate for that.
Would you like to speak to all of your summer programming? It's a lot of different ways, so I'll let Ms. Gaskins.
We do have an hourly rate that we pay for summer curriculum writing and summer school. And we anticipate about how much we'll need in budget for that with our request for those stipend funds each year. So that's outside of the regular pay.
All right, we are moving right along. I think that takes us to GCCGDC. Is that where you are?
9.4.
All right, so this is our staff leaves and absence policy. It is, of course, a little bit, one of our more lengthy policies. But we try to, you will see a lot of language change just to try to align with the model policy here. Taking out a little bit, it was a pretty lengthy policy. So we tried to take out some of the, just examples that were a little bit more wordy and tried to clean that up and make that make more sense for our employees. We did make one change to just align our definition of family to be the definition that aligns with the Family Medical Leave Act. So all of that's in compliance, so we're speaking the same language in all different places. So you will see that. Again, glad to answer any specific questions about that, but not a lot of substantive changes there besides that.
Board, do you have any questions on this one?
I do have a thought for the board. And Ms. Price, please correct me if I'm wrong. But we do not currently offer bereavement leave.
That is correct.
Is there a reason for that?
It is because the employees can use their annual days. However, they would like to instructure that as part of that, as part of the, they can choose to use the bereavement days there.
In your recruitment experience, is that something that comes up ever?
It, it does. We've certainly taken surveys before of other districts just to see where they are. And I would say it's, you know, half and half. Some districts do have it, some districts don't throughout the state. I don't think it's a major determining factor in why people do or don't come.
Ms. Slaschnick, are you saying like that we would offer bereavement, say for certain family members where they don't have to take their annual leave?
Yeah, some companies do like, you know, for an immediate family member, you get five days. For a secondary family member, you get three. Some just have a flat bereavement leave. It's just one thing that I have heard from people over the years is just sort of a thing in their head as why we don't.
Yeah, I would, I mean, at the state, we get bereavement days that don't go up against our annual leave. So I think it's pretty hard for me to tell someone that if their father or mother passed away, well, you gotta use annual leave to go to their funeral.
Let's, let's talk about this at our December board workshop. And that could be possibly something the district could even look to and what the cost would be for us.
If we wanted to do that, you certainly could give me an idea of how many days you were thinking. And we could, if we would look at it for a budget item and we could add it back in.
Yeah, that's something I'd definitely like to see.
And while we're talking about budget workshop, I just want to put this bug in everybody's ear too. Parental leave. I know that the state didn't go to 12 weeks, but I think we have some projections of what it might cost us to go. And I think that if we're talking about recruitment of new generations of teachers, that it's important for us to think about how we would expand that leave beyond just six weeks. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but those two things stood out in this policy to me, so I felt they were relevant to conversation.
All right. That's 9.4 GCC.
That's nine point four, GCCGDC. All right, nine point five, I think is next.
GCCGDCR, which is basically still under employee leave and absences, but
Okay, gotcha.
Still covers just the FMLA kind of portion of the leave. Again, we are saying a lot of the same things that we had in there before, but just trying to update the language to be more compliant with the model policy. So not a lot of substantive changes, just trying to be more compliant with, with the model and make it a little bit more clear what we're, we're clarifying and asking there. So again, glad to answer any questions specifically about that. It is a pretty detailed, detailed policy, but. Any questions about the FMLA policy there? Okay.
All right.
And GCCGDCR2, which was parental leave, which Ms. Flashnick was referring to, gives us the information about how we issue that for the six weeks, both under foster care, biological care, any of those kind of different elements. We did not make a lot of changes to that, just simply, again, just some language cleanup and just followed the, the law and the model policy there. All right, moving right along then. We will go to Policy GCK, which is professional staff assignments and transfers. The big change for this policy in alignment with Educator, Educator Assistance Act was that no later than 14 days before students are scheduled to return to school, that the superintendent would notify each staff member of their assignment before the school year. And of course, we've taken actions to make sure that's put into place. And we also want to make sure that when we're looking at that transfer piece down there, we had some great suggestions to just clarify that language, that the transfer of a professional staff member, instead of just naming it from one school to another, just making sure maybe we say one assignment to another to clarify that. It doesn't necessarily have to be a school building. It could be an assignment. So clarifying that language there as well. Otherwise, just some general cleanup information, but it's about reassignment. It does talk about the reassignment, that they would need five days advance notice of that unless it is something that they have agreed upon as well. That's also noted there in this policy. So those are the big changes for professional staff assignment.
So, does anyone else have anything? So their tentative assignment, it just kind of sounds silly. It's like, okay, we'll tell you your tentative assignment, and then five days you could be reassigned.
Correct. Yes.
I'm just thinking for our employees, do, do we need to say tentative assignment?
That's the, that's the law, language from the law.
Tentative assignment.
Correct.
Yes.
All right.
All right, let's move on to.
GCKR is professional staff assignments and transfers. Again, it just kind of aligns with Policy GCK. At the top, it does say staff members may be transferred at any time. We did not add, because the model did not add the portion that we just covered before with the five-day piece and all of that, because it is in the actual policy. And it is true, staff members can be transferred, kind of what you just said, you know, at any time. That is true. And if we did transfer them, we would just need to go back to the policy and follow those, those actual procedures. So we didn't kind of repeat that other part here, because it is in the other piece. Otherwise, it's just some cleanup pieces to what we were already doing, trying to align our language. All right, if no questions, we will move on to GCOA, which is our evaluation of instructional staff. Again, these are practices that are already in place in Lexington I. The big things that you will see struck out are simply things that we just did to clean up. They moved all of those things into GCOAR. They put it in the rule just to make it clean. So we wanted to be aligned with what they had asked us to do. So we did that as well. So that's why you see those things struck out, certainly not because we're not doing them, just because we wanted to move them over. So these are things that we are already moving into place and not a lot of changes there with GCOA. Glad to answer any questions on that. All right. GCOAR is all red, because it is literally all the things we just moved over. So things we were already doing, and we just moved them over. They wanted those to be in a rule. So we're just trying to clean all of those things up. GCQC, GCQD is resignation of professional staff. This is really about contract release and breach. The part that's in red at the top, that if a staff member signs a contract in another district without having been formally released, they will be considered to breach their contract. That's really not anything that's new. It's just something that we're, you know, putting in writing in the, the policy this time, which is nice to have. It does have the within 60 days of breach piece, which is new, that you'll see there in red. And then outlines some of the reasons for contract, contract release. You will note in the contract release section there, it does not have some of the language pieces from the educator, educator, I can't say that word tonight for some reason, Educator Assistance Act about the relocation piece, which is in the Educator Assistance Act. So we are going to revisit that a little bit before second reading. So you may see a little bit added to that on the bullet there, because we weren't really comfortable with that. And so we want to just kind of massage that second part a little bit before our next reading. But glad to answer any other questions there. They did also change, it doesn't have to be in our policy, but the State Department also did change the length of time for their holding people for breach. It used to be a year, and they've changed that to six months as well. Okay, GCQF, discipline, suspension, and dismissal of professional staff. We've aligned the language, and we've moved a lot of those details to the rules. So the things that you see crossed out, again, are not things we're taking away. They're just things that we are trying to align with the model and move those into the rules. Glad to answer any questions. We will move right along then to GCQFR. Nothing, absolutely nothing new, just things we have moved over from one policy to the rule. Okay, the next two are things that, next one is CGPBR, which normally is not me, I think. Am I in the right order? Am I in the right one? Am I good? Okay. So CGPBR, I am normally not a C person, but since this is something we were going through, policies that came to my attention, I brought it forward when we were talking about kind of leave and all those types of things. First of all, it's a rule without a policy that I'm not sure maybe just didn't get deleted at some point. We don't really know exactly what happened here. But it is obviously not applicable anymore. It doesn't have a policy. You guys set the calendar already every year. It's something that was last updated in, I think, 95. It's old and outdated and not accurate, and just needs to be deleted and go away. So I would recommend that we move forward with that, since you guys approve the calendar and make other decisions otherwise. So glad to answer any questions about that, but. And then CGPH is kind of the same thing. I think, again, I'm not a C person usually, but this one is about administrative personnel vacations. And I'm sure all my principals back here would have loved to have had a two-week vacation at some point when this policy was written. But we don't really do that anymore. So I don't know when we stopped or started. I don't know. But we don't do that. And so this one is kind of outdated. And obviously, taking the, the leave policy, we need to align those, and this one needs to go away. And our leave policy would stand as the accurate one. So this one would need to be removed quickly before they take a two-week vacation.
I know. It's like, wait, what if you get a call tomorrow? Here I go.
Yes, there are principals in the building right now.
I know, I know.
Don't listen. Plug your ears.
Right. So, all right. Did I make it through all of them? I think so.
You did. Wow.
Any questions on any of those?
Board, if you do have questions or thoughts from now till next month, reach out to Ms. Price.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Price, I'm going to turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight, I have just two items to share with you in the superintendent's report. The first item. Thank you. All right. So the first item is an overview of the state funding formula. And you may be wondering, why are we talking about that now? Well, for a couple of reasons. The legislature is about to return to session in the coming months. We have a regional advocacy meeting this week, and we have a legislative advocacy meeting later in December. So the item that got our attention quite a bit during the past session was the state funding formula for education. And I thought it would be nice to kind of do an overview of that and to let you know what almost happened compared to what actually did happen. And if we don't get things changed, it could really mean bad news for us in the budget process ahead. So I think it's really important for us to be equipped with some of these details, to be able to have some very specific conversations and things that we want to ask for. In addition to that, with some updates to policy, and also our efforts to focus our attention the past couple of years on the importance of attendance, and what happens when those expectations fall short with regards to truancy, just want to give everyone an overview of our truancy process. But first, let's dive into the state aid to classrooms education formula. And so the state aid to classrooms program was first enacted in the fiscal year 2223 budget. So that means we've gone through three cycles of this. And the program is outlined in proviso 1.3 of the Appropriations Act. So at the title of this slide, you see state aid to classrooms, House One. And the reason that it's called House One is because this was the original proposal. Later, what got adopted was, is referred to as House Two, and I want to walk you through that. So this past year, we had new money that was being added to the state aid to classrooms formula of 112 million additional dollars. Okay? So how was that divided up? And you can see here the slide with two numbers. 61.2 million went to traditional districts, and 50.7 million went to charter districts. So almost an even split with what's going to public traditional schools and what's going to charter schools. But check out the bubble in the bottom right-hand corner and the bottom left-hand corner. 61.2 million is going to public, which supports 93% of the students in South Carolina, and 50 million is going to the system that supports 7% of the students in South Carolina. That might get your attention. I hope it does. Just a little. So moving ahead with the House One budget estimates, you see over the last three years, those numbers that are along the bottom of your screen. With last year, as was mentioned on the first slide, we had 112 million additional dollars this year. The year before, we had 200 million additional dollars. And then the year before that, 324 million additional dollars. So there are some very wise people who work in different financial positions and offices around the school districts in the state. And they began to detect that something wasn't right back in '24. But with the amount of new money that was being sent out to everyone, it kind of got disguised. So it didn't really pop up. And whenever they went through and tried to show some specific reasons why this formula was problematic, it didn't really shake out. Well, it shook out this past year. So if you look at the charter funding and the traditional funding, going across the top two rows in those three columns, you see in '24, about 76% of the new dollars went to traditional districts, 24% went to charter. And in '25, 76% went to traditional, 24% went to charter. Nothing changed in the formula, but because of the way things are weighted and proportioned, all of a sudden, that formula kicked out. The House One percentages were only 54% went to traditional districts, and 45% went to charter. Well, what changed with students? That's what the second two columns are. Did the number of students significantly increase in charter schools to trigger that bump, or did it not? And so you see traditional students went from 94% to 93.5% to 92.5%. A change of about 1.5%. Charter students went from 5.8% to 6.4% to 7.49%. So an increase in three years of less than 2%. But the difference in funding and money increase for charter schools by over 21%. Does that get your attention? That there's a flaw in the formula? I hope so. So moving ahead, just taking a look for how that looks with our traditional versus charter student-based student allocation. So if we get about $6,000 for a traditional student of new money, a brick-and-mortar charter school gets 13,500 for each additional student, and a virtual charter school gets 1.65% of that money. So just under $10,000. So you see the difference in the weighting between traditional charter schools, I mean, traditional public schools and charter schools. Now, when you ask that question, what often gets mentioned is that traditional districts have the ability to go to their taxpayers to increase mileage amounts. Charter schools do not have that option. So this formula is presented to help them close that gap. And I believe that the effort is to recognize that there is a gap. It's not exactly fair. Something needs to be done to make sure it is proportionate, but the current formula isn't working. At least, it is for charter schools, not so much for traditional school districts.
Hey, Dr. Price, can I ask one question on that? And you may not know, but charter school boards are not elected, they're appointed?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
So then we get to House Two. And let me, because I cannot read those numbers from up here. So let me scroll through on my screen. So when you look at House Two, again, the first three sections that you see going from left to right is just another way of looking at those funds. And I'm going to blow that up a little bit here. So again, 76% of the new money went to, in '24, 76% went to traditional public schools, 24% went to charter. Again, in '25, 75% went to traditional schools, 24% to charter. And then what House One proposed is that third column, where 54% went to traditional and 45% went to charter. The whistles and the alarms started sounding. Our State Administrators Association reached out to our legislative delegates and those that are working on the finance committees to say, "Hey, look at this. I don't think this was what was intended by this formula. Something needs to be done." So they did some quick changes, and House One changed to House Two, which is what you see on the far right. So it's still a difference where the percentage of new money going to public schools came down, but it went up in charters. So that was a one-time fix. But the, the promise, or what was said at that time, was that this formula would be reviewed. One more look at the discrepancies in the monies. You see here, the blue column represents the new funding per student, per ADM. And in '24, it was 5.1 times the amount given to public school districts per student. And again, the, the amount of new money in that year was so great that it didn't necessarily stand out. But even in House One, you see there was a 10.2 times difference. And with the quick math and the changes, it still reduced it to 5.1. So there needs to be some more work done on this. And it is a very complex formula. I believe we got a proposal that's I believe we got a proposal that's over 60 pages long for some suggestions to be considered for this new formula. But it can't continue to operate the way it is currently designed and for a school district like ours to continue to thrive. And what I'll point out here coming up is in SCASA, our State Administrators Association, has sent a recommendation, and it really focuses on four areas: reliability, predictability, dependability, and sustainability. And I'll bring your attention to the sustainability line at the bottom. It's, we are requesting that it have less on an index of taxpaying ability. Because in a school district like Lexington One, where it is considered one of the more affluent school districts in the state, whenever they decide how much money is going to be given to traditional districts, then they take a look at this index of taxpaying ability and they rank the school districts from the wealthiest to the least wealthiest. And the least wealthiest get more of the share than the most wealthiest because the index of taxpaying ability says, oh, you can go to your local taxpayers and consider a millage increase to make up the difference. So there are situations in our school district where school districts are increasing in student enrollment but are getting a decrease in their state allocation funding. That used to never be the case before the state aid to classrooms formula was introduced. If you went up in students, you went up in funding. That is not the case anymore. So now, in a district like Lexington One, let's say that there is a proposal to raise the base teacher salary by X amount of dollars. Well, because of where we lie on this index, we may not get all of the funding to cover that proposed increase. And for us to do what others are doing, we would have to look at a millage increase or making cuts to be able to keep up with certain things. So it's a challenge. And I just bring this to your attention so that you all are aware that there is a flaw in the formula. They are aware of it, and the more that we can bang that drum in these upcoming meetings and conversation opportunities that we have, the more likely we are to get a formula that's a little more fair and reasonable, not only to traditional school districts, but also taken into consideration what charters are faced with as well. So I hope that is helpful information, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions that you have at this time regarding that portion.
Dr. Price, not really a question, but I do want to say I appreciate this information, not just for me, but I think the public needs to know that when we do budgeting, these are the types of things we have to look at. You know, we are unfortunately feel like we're punished for being in such an affluent county. And I wish our partners at the State House would realize this, that the way they're doing this is doing nothing but putting it on the back of the taxpayers, which they're already paying anyway with the taxes they're paying. So then they get hit almost double with county stuff if we have to raise millage. And I just wish, and I hope some of our legislators are listening and watching this because this is a big push that we're just not going to be able to sustain Lexington One if we don't do something about this formula.
And I would add that it's not just our friends down at the State House, but it's also some of our friends at the county who, you know, feel like we mismanage or whatever. I won't get into all that, but this is very important for them to be aware of as well.
Dr. Price, just a question. Does our State Department of Education provide input to the House on how we do this funding? Or, and I mean, did they also reject these thoughts of what was designed or?
They, Mr. Price, that's a great question. They do have the opportunity to provide input. How much of that is considered in the final determination, I'm unable to say. But what they have been asked to do, you see on the slide right now, proviso 1.3 for the current fiscal year. So it's a current proviso that's attached to this year's budget. Directs the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office to review the formula to ensure districts and charter authorizers receive more consistent distributions. I do know that they have put out a survey to school districts and charter school associations across the state to give everyone an opportunity to have voice in this review process. We have not gotten an update yet as to the feedback that they've received. I know that Mrs. Miller and her School Finance Officers Association, they have provided recommendations. The State Administrators Association has provided recommendations, and the State Department of Education will also have the opportunity as well. So all of those respective agencies have the opportunity to share voice.
Weren't they supposed to put a actual task force of some kind together? And do we know if that's just not going to happen any longer, or who we should ask that question to?
That's a great question, and I can't recall if I heard that or if I read that. But what got approved is what you see on the slide here, is that they would review. Now, who's involved in that review? The proviso doesn't state. But I believe that was, I read that or heard that somewhere, and that was my understanding. But I don't know that necessarily a task force is going to be pulled together based on the way it's written and approved.
And one more question about charter schools as far as curriculum testing. Are they held to the same state-level standards that we are?
Public charters, yes, private, no.
And private charters are included in the formula?
No.
No, just public?
Yes. Private schools are independent. Okay, moving on. Last is just to give you an update on our truancy process, and I want to thank Mr. McCormick for checking behind me to make sure I got these details correct. But whenever a student is absent, the parent or guardian is notified. We have a process for doing that. Once the student returns, they are asked to provide an excuse within three days of their return. If a student has three consecutive or five cumulative unexcused absences, they are identified as truant. Schools attempt to contact with parents or guardians to schedule an attendance intervention plan meeting. And that's where they dive into the reasons behind the absences, and they share and discuss ideas for how we might be able to address those to eliminate those. After that plan is in place, if the student has two more unexcused absences, then they're reported to the court system as truant, having violated their agreed-upon attendance intervention plan. So if a student is between the ages of 12 and 17, the truancy petition is against the student and the parent. But if the student is under 12, the truancy petition is against the parent. And then finally, if the student is under a court order, so after you've had an intervention plan in place, they've been reported to the court system, the court has given them a directive, and then they violate that, then they're reported for contempt. And the consequences for that could be a variety of things. So as we continue to express the importance of attendance, and it's hard to learn when you're not in school, which is why attendance is so, so important, there are some very stiff consequences for those who are considered truant. So I wanted to share that with you in case any questions were to arise as we move forward with those processes.
Dr. Price, just clarifying for truancy, when the student returns, they're asked to provide an excuse within three days. So as long as they have a parent note, a doctor's excuse, any of that, that's okay. This is if they have three consecutive or five cumulative unexcused, no notes, nothing.
No notice, no documentation, nothing, they're just unaccounted for. They miss school, we don't know why, we haven't heard anything.
And off the top of your head, do you have an approximate number of how often we have to deal with this in our district?
I'm looking to Mr. McCormick. Do you have that number by chance, Mr. McCormick?
So as of today, we have 205 students coded as truant in our school district.
This school year?
Yes, ma'am.
And within nine weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
205? That are at the process of this, they're coded as truant, so they have been reported to the court system?
No, ma'am.
No.
They are coded 151 in Power School, meaning they've had three consecutive or a total of five unexcused absences for this school year.
Where can a parent see that information on the Power School? Or is it, what'd you say, Power School or Parent Square?
Yes, ma'am, so they have access to that in Parent Square.
Okay.
We house that information in Power School.
Okay, good.
And if they're coded, I'm sorry.
Is it possible that those are people that like moved and didn't withdraw from the school? We just have no idea, we can't make contact?
Those absences can happen for a variety of reasons, that is possible, yes, ma'am.
And I was just going to add that if a student is coded that way, a parent will be notified of it. So it's not on the parent to make sure they are aware. If that happens, the school's going to reach out to the parent to let them know the student is coded that way, and that's when they'll be invited in to set up an attendance intervention plan.
Could those, that 205, could it be that the parents just forgot to send a note in? Could it be rectified by a parental note?
It could be, if they're able to either provide parent notes or medical notes. Because oftentimes, students may have doctor's appointments and they just don't bring in notes. And then all of a sudden, they hit this threshold and there's a problem. And that could take place before an intervention plan is actually implemented. But if you have no explanation of why, you probably move forward with the plan at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Miller for our finance report.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Price, and Board members. This evening, we have the September 30th, sorry, I almost grabbed the microphone. Can you hear me okay? Am I tall enough for it to work? This evening, we have the general fund revenue and expenditures as of September 30th, 2025. First, we're going to start with our revenue. There was approximately 39 million of revenue as of September 30th, with approximately 24.3 million of that being state revenue and an additional 6.8 million in transfers, which is also state revenue. That leaves about 8 million, that was local revenue, and that is approximately 20.5, so almost 21% of our total funding is at the local sources section right now. We have budgeted for that to be approximately 37%. That means once we start collecting more of our local tax dollars, you'll see that percentage continue to go up each month. The next slide here is just a summary of the information that you already have the full detail for in your board packet. Moving on to expenditures, there's approximately $77 million of expenditures as of September 30th, 2025. The largest amount of that, of course, is in our salaries and benefits at approximately $65 million. That is about 84% of our total budget. We do expect that to be closer to 88% by the end of the year. Moving on, we have the next slide, again, a summary of the detailed report of expenditures that you have in your packet. Our next slide here is our general fund balance as of September 30th, 2025. The purple line there is what we're looking at for fiscal year '26. Keep in mind that these are projections still, these are just at a moment in time where we were. You can see, if I can get this little, oh, no, that wasn't the right button, the laser here. So this is where we, oh, you can't see that. What a bummer. It was great. It was great. Okay, I'm still going to do it, just for the audience. Okay, there we are, at about 79 million is our general fund balance as of September 30th. Again, I'm just showing you a trend, we're in line with where we were last year. This is, again, not where we're going to end up at year-end. We're still anticipating to use approximately 11 million of our fund balance. But as of September 30th, these were the numbers.
Ms. Miller, may I ask a question real quick? And this is kind of picky, and if y'all disagree, that's fine. But essentially, the numbers for the purple through September are kind of, we know those numbers, right?
Right.
But October, November, December, it's your best guess, right?
Right.
Is there a way to delineate that with a color or something to say kind of the first months through September locked in? Or, I know it's really picky.
How about after the audit, we can do that? Because technically, this 119 million is still a projected number. That's not final yet until we have our audited financial statement. So that's right now, that's why I have the big disclosure up there that June 25 through '26 are all projected because that amount is still going to change. But then, I'll try to do what I did last year where I had the big red line that just showed, okay, we know these ones, the rest going forward are projected.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next slide here, last month when we talked, I was thinking that we wouldn't dip below the required fiscal year unassigned fund balance. But based on our timing of when we receive our revenue and when our expenditures are made, we actually hit that this month. So you can see there with the purple line again, it is going below right here at the September, between September and October. That's where the line is showing that we have dipped below the required 16.67% of the unassigned fund balance, which was approximately 67 million. Our unassigned fund balance as of September 30th was approximately 61 million. The good news is, that is an annual requirement, so there's nothing to worry about. But it does show you exactly why it's important to have a fund balance and to have a healthy fund balance because we did not collect the revenue that we thought we would for this month. And so it'll come in next month, you know, it's not that it's not going to happen, it's just the timing of it. And so fortunately, we can continue to pay payroll and all our expenditures because we do have our fund balance at a level that we can continue to operate. Are there any questions on this?
Madam Chair.
Sorry, I do have a question. So September 30th is, I know it's not official because we haven't had the audit, but it's official for what we know today. Have we spent any money out of the general fund balance to balance the budget yet?
No.
Okay. Do you have a concept of, because we have however much money earmarked, I forget what it was, like 11-some million?
Approximately 11 million dollars.
Do we have an idea of what month we might get to where we may start needing to use that? Do we have any concept if we're going to need to use that money?
Right now, with our projections, we are on target to use those 11 million dollars that we budgeted. We ran our payroll projections, which of course is almost 90% of our budget. And right now, it looks like, I think our latest number was that we would go over about $300,000. So if that's the case, you're not going to have that big cushion that we had in June 30th, '26 where we did not use that 24 million because we're actually going to exceed it by 400 or 300,000 dollars. Based on the numbers that we have right now, a lot can still change because we're very early in the year. So we are projecting that we are going to use that 11 million. All right, any other questions before I move on? All right, the last slide we have is our procurement report for September 30th. There was approximately 1,136 transactions, with 43 of those being identified as unauthorized. And the proper paperwork has been submitted and signed by the principals and myself or departments ratifying that those purchases, again, those could be things where a form, they're missing a signature, they could have placed an order for something and have been invoiced before they put a purchase order in. But right now, I continue to monitor those, and if I see any trends, I'll investigate those further.
And I'm assuming because of the way you're acting, you're not concerned that there's so many more than compared to last one?
Right. So there are 43. If you look at that, you know, 31 schools, our various departments, you know, a little over one each. I don't consider that anything substantial standing out that would be of area of concern.
All right, Board, any other questions for Ms. Miller?
I do have two. I'm sorry to hog the mic on this, but I think it's important. In our packet, we also have some reports. We have a report titled Monthly General Fund Balance Report. I'm having a hard time understanding a breakdown of some of that money. Is it possible to detail out, like for $900,000? Is it possible to detail out, like for 900,000 dollars categorized as money spent, but service or goods are still to come in the future? What exactly does that go towards? And then, across each of those columns, you don't have to necessarily go through it tonight, but for future financial reports for us as a board, it's really hard to remember what all we have approved, what things might have been approved before certain members were on the board. So I'd love to see like an ongoing tally of what all is in the fund balance and what that money is for.
Sure, if that's the pleasure of the Board, I'm happy to add, um, that information to the report. Um, can I address the first question that you had about the first column?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is the non-spendable? Um, if you recall, at the end of the year for our audit, we have to make adjustments. One of the adjustments is if we've paid some bills that really are for expenses for the next year, we paid the cash already, we move it into this classification, that's what makes up that amount. So, for example, a lot of the times, your, your insurance payment, right? Your, um, property liability insurance, you can't pay it after the fact. They want you to just pay it before. So if it's due July 1st, chances are, we've already written the check in June. So a lot of that balance is that insurance. And all I've done for this report, I'm not going through every month and calculating exactly, I'm just amortizing that, which means 1/12 of that each month, I'm adjusting that. You'll notice it's a very consistent formula. That's just an estimate, because it's going to go back up each month it changes, depending on when I pay bills. It would take a significant amount of time to actually calculate truly, go through all our payments, which ones were for this month, which ones are for next month. So that's just a ballpark number, and that's just for things that I mentioned, like our insurance that we have to pay ahead of time.
So it could be good just to kinda know what those items are, not necessarily the dollar amounts, but it could be good just to know kinda what's inclusive in that number. But then beyond that, on the other columns, I would think it would be important for us to know, like tonight, we just authorized a certain amount of money. I don't remember what budget line we did it from, but, you know, we authorized money for other things, and it starts to all run together, and so it's very hard as a board member to look at that and have a full, true financial picture of what our fund balance looks like, so that we don't get in a situation where we're making overspending decisions. Not that you would let us get there, but, um, and my other question is on monthly capital project reports. Can you talk me through the transfers? So I was using, for example, the 2022B bond series shows 484,441 dollars in available interest that was transferred. How do we know where it's being transferred to?
Okay, um, I don't have the report pulled up, let me get that, but I'll go ahead and start talking. Um, the total in that column, correct me if I'm wrong, it should total to zero at the bottom? So that means it's up in a row above that. So the money came in, and then you'll recall, Dr. Cooper, look at that, I just gave you a new title, Dr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper will come to the Board and say, "We need to, um, increase this," or "We need to spend money on this," those are the items that have moved, projects, um, that have been brought forward to the Board. So they're all in that report you're looking at, they did not go anywhere else.
Okay, so it's the same list of projects, just maybe a project was below budget for Project A and Project B we needed more money for?
Correct.
Okay, and if we were to have a situation where, let's say, all the projects were at budget, we wouldn't have any transfers, correct?
Correct. And I'm excited to say, that, um, bond issuance right there, that 22B, um, is, as you can see, the balance is zero. We've met our compliance requirement of having that spent within the three-year period that is allowable. So thank you to Mr. Cooper and his team for making sure we got those funds spent and utilized every penny that we could.
Board, do you have any other questions for Ms. Miller about the finance report? Stay there. Okay, we're gonna move on to action items, and we're gonna start with, um, bond refunding of Series 2015A. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution for the refund of the 2015A general obligation bonds?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution for the refund of 2015A general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Alright, Ms. Miller, I'll turn this over to you for discussion.
This is actually something I get exciting about, get excited about. This is not spending money, this is saving money. So this makes me happy to stand before the Board and have this opportunity, um, to share with the Board, to, um, make a motion and vote on this evening. But before I go into that, I wanted to let you know that Mike Gallagher with Compass, uh, Municipal Compass Advisors, our financial advisor is here, and Mr. Theodore DeBeauz with Hanesworth, Thinkler &amp; Boyd, our bond attorney is here as well. Um, as you know, we work closely with them throughout the year, and this year, we've worked a lot together. I appreciate all their efforts, and they're here if you have additional questions. Um, this is, um, although it looks like a large document, it's pretty straightforward. So I'm gonna try to give you the abbreviated version of this. So what we're here tonight to do is just ask for the Board to allow us, which is to approve a resolution to refund our 2015A general obligation bonds. And so what that means is, just like your mortgage, if you found a better interest rate and you wanna refinance that, so you're gonna pay less interest, that's basically what we'd be doing with this bond. And so we were able to actually, um, get our numbers today, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Um, the numbers, I'm excited, um, about this, it's, uh, net present value, so the actual value of the savings will be 928,000 dollars, that's almost a million dollars. That's a savings of 2.32%. So, um, this evening, we are just asking for permission to move forward with that, for the district to be able to take advantage of that savings and save the district almost a million dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, Board, do you have questions for her?
I have a clarifying question. In this resolution, it does say if you can't hit the 2% net present value, that you would have to come back to the Board for approval, correct?
That is correct.
So for just the general public, we are not talking about adding any additional debt. We are just simply talking about refinancing debt that we already have. And if we cannot save the amount of money at least 2%, we'll reevaluate.
Exactly, we would not move forward with that, so this is just straightforward. If you approve for this, we will work with, um, our team over there, and we will save the district money.
So Ms. Miller, um, you mentioned the net present value, 928,000 dollars, which would be a savings of 2.32% to the district. And that's based on some numbers you've received today?
Yes, sir.
Will those numbers change at all in the next few days, few weeks, few months? And then, that savings is not there?
And if that savings is not there, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't move forward with the sale? So, if the 2% savings that, um, Mrs. Flashnick mentioned is not attainable, we stop. We do not move forward with it. But as of today, when we ran numbers, this is the savings that if we were to able to act on it today, this is what we would have saved today.
And how is that normally communicated to the Board? Like, hey, today's the day, we got it, we're pulling the trigger? I mean, what, what do we actually, how do we handle that communication?
I'm gonna let our gentlemen step up here, they, um, have everything, um, ready to go, I believe. So we would move forward very fast to take advantage.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Rice, members of the Board, if you approve tonight's resolution, then we would take bids. South Carolina law requires that this type of bond, uh, be solicited through sealed bid process. Sealed through a secure internet site now. Nobody actually shows up with an envelope, but we use a secure internet site. And if the Board moves forward tonight and approves this resolution, we will take bids next Thursday at noon. And at the appointed hour, Mr. Gallagher will push a button on his screen, and the available interest rates will flash up. And we will know in 10 seconds whether you made the 2.0% threshold. And if you don't, you just say, "Thanks, but no."
Thank you.
Alright, Board, sorry, quick question. So I guess, kinda going back to the question, would this be like a Board docs update or some other informal update that somehow, or at a Board meeting that we would get?
I'll do a memo and send it to Jennifer, she can decide.
Perfect.
We can add it in a Board Brief Update.
And, Mr. Rice, one more thing. If you get better than two and we accept the bid, that's fixed for the rest of the bond issue, it can't change after that.
Thank you.
Alright, Board, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the resolution for the refund of the 2015A general obligation bonds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Alright, we are moving on to second reading of Policy BE, Policy BEA, and Policy BEDI. And so I will turn that over to Ms. Libby Roof.
Do we get a motion on?
Oh, yes. Do I hear a motion regarding Policy BE, BEA, and BEDI?
Madam Chair, I move-
Actually, let's do them one at a time, let's do just Policy BE.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Policy BE Board Meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Roof, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
The only thing that I will, uh, point out is that, um, from the first reading to the second reading, um, some Board members, as you all may recall, there was discussion about the policy that is being deleted, have the reference to public hearings during attendance lines, redrawings. And so, um, adding that into this policy, that's the part highlighted in yellow for you. Um, there are no other changes.
Thank you, Ms. Roof, for adding it back in. Board, do you have any other comments or questions for Policy BE? At this time? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Policy BE, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Now do I hear a policy regarding, a motion regarding Policy BEA?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy BEA, live streaming of Board Meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Roof?
There, I received, um, no feedback on any changes since first reading, so there are no changes made.
Okay, great, Board, any other comments on Policy BEA? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding Policy BEDI?
Madam Chair, I move we approve Policy BEDI, news media services at Board Meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Roof?
Again, no, um, feedback on changes, so it stands as it was at first reading.
Board, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the deletion of Policy KBCC and Policy KCC?
Madam Chair, I move to delete Policy KBCC, Board Meeting News Coverage, and Policy KCC Public Hearings.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Ms. Roof?
No changes, and just to, uh, remind, uh, really for the folks at home, the deletion of this policy is because the information is covered in Policy B, uh, the, not the whole policy, the B policies that we just updated, or you just updated.
Thank you, Ms. No, 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 you're great, thank you. Um, Board, any other comments on that one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding Policy BJ and the deletion of Policy B, of BJR?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Policy BJ, School Board Legislative Program, and deletion of Policy, the, deletion of BJ-R Administrative Rule.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Shealy, I will turn this over to you for discussion.
Yeah, just as a quick reminder, the language largely from the administrative rule was incorporated into the policy document. Um, again, as just a brief reminder, this policy speaks to the expectation that the Board's gonna be informed of applicable legislation, and we're gonna work with other legislators, our School Board Association, other groups to craft and refine the legislation, similar to what Dr. Price mentioned earlier tonight. Thank you for that heads up. Um, and then more specifically, we're gonna nominate a Board Legislative Delegate who's gonna be a liaison for our Board, specific to efforts around building relationships with legislators, monitoring legislation, reporting, um, advocacy efforts to the Board, representing the Board as a whole, and coordinating essentially all of our efforts. So we, we reworded that, um, delegate, if you will, if you will, to a delegate rather than a contact to kind of reinforce that we are delegating that expectation, the entire Board to this, um, legislative representative, um, who will speak on the entire Board's behalf, not necessarily an individual's behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Um, Board members, do you have any other comments before we vote? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Um, I'd like to provide a brief background on the transition of our legislative policy. Um, back in December, during our organizational meeting, we appointed Mr. Anderson as our Board Legislative Contact, or BLC, to serve as our primary liaison with the South Carolina School Boards Association. He accepted that role, and we thank him for his work. Um, since then, the Board reviewed Policy BJ and BJR, and desire to expand the role of this position. This policy work has resulted in the expanded role of the Board Legislative Delegate, which we just voted on. So, now to allow another Board Member the opportunity to fulfill the expectations of this now expanded role, Mr. Anderson has graciously stepped down, and we are grateful to him for performing the duties of the BLC in the interim while we developed and finalized these changes. This new appointment will be in place until the next Board Organization meeting upon the 2026 Board Elections. With that said, do I hear a motion regarding our Board Legislative Delegate?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Ms. Katie McCowen as the Board Legislative Delegate through November 2026.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, any discussion, Ms. McCowen, do you?
I look very much forward to, to doing this work. I, um, I'm pretty passionate about it, and, um, you know, built quite a few relationships before I was on the Board and as I've been on the Board. And I know a lot of us have a lot of relationships, you know, built, so I look forward to it being a group effort too, but, um, thank you for nominating me. And, um, I would like to say though, um, tomorrow night, I will have to excuse myself from that meeting, which I really hate to do, because it's our first, my first, you know, act. But, um, Avery has his eighth grade recognition tomorrow night at the football game, so I can't miss that, but, anyway. I will beat all the others, I promise.
Alright, thank you. Um, just a quick comment, Ms. McCowen, we've got your back. A couple of us will be attending on your behalf, and we will absolutely fill you in as our delegate.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to interject here that I will, uh, thank Ms. Shealy. She really spearheaded this and, and took the bull by the horns and, uh, clearly defined what she thought this role should be and what she'd be doing, and I'm grateful to you for that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Ms. Shealy, thank you. Alright, um, we are going to next certify the delegates to represent Lexington District 1 Board of Trustees. Just clarifying, you're going to delegate, you are, you are, you are, you are, you're going, you're going. Okay. Do I hear a motion to certify Mackenzie Flashnick, Chris Rice, Beth Shealy, Kathy Henderson, Katie McCowen, and Nick Pizzuti to serve as delegates to represent the Lexington 1 Board of Trustees at the South Carolina School Board Association Delegate Assembly, which will be held on December 6th, 2025? Thank you, Ms. Flashnick, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, any discussion? So basically, in December, we will be attending the South Carolina School Boards Association Conference, where there's the Delegate Assembly, and we will all go, and, um, our district gets a certain number of votes. And we will all attend and vote the same for our district. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding Policy GCLE and GCLER?
I'm having the Chris effect on my documents.
It is weird stuff.
Sorry.
Anybody got it up?
Yeah, anybody else got it? Madam Chair, I move to approve Policy GCLE and GCLER, unencumbered time.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Price, alternative?
Do you think we are going to make one change to that policy? If that is okay, if we can just amend that. On policy GCLE, we did note in the last paragraph there on GCLE, the very last sentence in the very last paragraph, it should say, instead of the penalties listed above, for the instructional failure of a principal to provide school nurses with thirty minutes unencumbered time would be applicable. That really should be school teachers. We got really carried away with changing everything to school nurses. And it's trying to say, all the things that were applied to school teachers would be applicable to school nurses. So it really should say school teachers there, saying that all those things that we did for teachers would apply to the nurses as well. So we just need to change that one word. So if we could just make that change, I think that would make the policy correct there.
Very good catch.
Ms. Price, I will, I will take the blame, I guess, for that. I know typically, when we post things prior to the meeting, we don't like to change them once they've been posted to the public. But as I was reviewing that, I saw it, and I thought, I know this is an action item, but I brought it up. So it's not the district not changing anything. That was something from me out. So if anybody is mad that we changed what was posted, and we're getting ready to vote on it, just send me an email.
That's a perfect catch. We appreciate the catch. I think you might want to just amend your motion slightly with that word, because you're approving it as it is. So you might just say, move to approve the policy blah blah blah. By, you want me to do it? Okay, yeah. Madam Chair, I move to approve policy GCLE, GCLE-dash-R unencumbered time with stated edits to the last paragraph.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy and Mr. Rice. You second that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Perfect, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to policy JEB. Do I hear a motion regarding policy JEB?
Motion to approve policy JEB entrance age.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I will turn it over to Dr. Gaskins.
Thank you. I have not received any additional feedback since first reading, and so no changes have been made since then. Just to review, we made some just slight updates to our entrance age policy, including the state law around parents being able to sign a legal waiver to opt their child out of kindergarten.
Perfect, thank you. Board members, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding policy JH, JHR, and the deletion of policy JE?
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy JH, JH-dash-R student attendance, absences, and excuses, and delete policy JE, student attendance, as this policy has been incorporated into policy JH-dash, slash, JH-dash-R.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All right, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And we are bringing these items to you with no changes from first reading. We are bringing a revised JH and JHR policy, along with a title change from student absences and excuses to be student attendance, absences, and excuses. Along with that, we are recommending deleting policy JE, as we have moved the non-redundant information from it to policy JH and the administrative rule JHR.
All right, board members, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Cooper regarding student attendance, absences, and excuses, policy JH?
I had a question, but that was resolved. The policy basically stated from age six to seventeen, but some of the other policies stated that children would start school at five. So I was asking the question, should it be five to seventeen? But I think y'all, I guess Dr. Price sent me an email, but I know he consulted with your team. So thanks for clarifying that, because parents have the option to opt the child out of starting school at age five, age five is not included in truancy.
That is correct, sir.
And so therefore, our policy goes six to seventeen, and that is why there's, appears to be an inconsistency in our policies, but it is not actually an inconsistency. So thank y'all for taking care of that for me.
Yes, sir.
I had sent an email about some of the things I wanted to address, and I think you were going to maybe address some of those tonight.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. I think there was a question about the early dismissal, late arrival, and being a, more of a daily type, you know, a daily type scenario. A parent bringing a child in late and needing to sign in, or dismissing a child early on a daily basis for an appointment or whatever reason. And that part of the policy is written to address modified schedules, primarily for seniors who have a late arrival or early dismissed because they have earned all of their credits. So I believe that was one of the, one of the questions, and so we do, we do feel good about the policy as, as written there.
The only other thing that I had question about was the, I'll just read you what I had written. I wanted to either add or change, a parent guardian excuse will be accepted for illness or family illness for up to ten total days during a school year, regardless of whether those days occur consecutively or covered by single note. And a doctor's excuse will be required when the absence is three or more consecutive days for medical reasons, the student has accumulated more than ten illness-related absences during the year, or a pattern of questionable absences exists, and the principal requests verification. I understand that we don't, this is not something that we all want to put into the policy, because it's been taken advantage of with the parent notes. Is that kind of what?
Yes, ma'am, and I think, we feel that we are best here stating it more generally. Because the way you just described it, those are acceptable ways. You can provide that doctor's note for those days. You can provide that parent note for those days. But parent notes can also extend beyond just for a medical reason. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to confuse folks by defining it specifically for that. Nor did we want to make the mandatory doctor's note for three consecutive just based on the very individualized scenarios that can happen and do happen on a daily basis. And just to give an example for this board, and knock on wood, it doesn't happen to any, any of us in our families. But as we move into flu season, you know, child number one gets sick, we take him to the doctor, he's got the flu. Two days later, child number two gets sick, we take them back to the doctor, he's got the flu. A few days later, the little one gets it. Well, if that parent decides, look, I know what this is, I don't want to spend that hundred and fifty bucks for that appointment, and wanting to keep that child home, they could write that parent note for that. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to restrict it in policy. But also in there, we do have in there that, you know, the principal does rest as, you know, approving all absences. And so that, we feel comfortable that that still allows us to give that review, to make sure a, absences or notes are not being taken advantage of. But we do stay general enough that we can apply this for, for all situations.
Okay, great. And I see, I see the point there. I guess for, for me, with the problem that I've seen in the past is principals, because we've given that autonomy for principals to approve or not approve certain absences, there's just not a lot of consistency. So I guess what I would ask from, from you is just for us to be very, very clear, for everyone to be the same on that. Because you hear a parent screaming, because, you know, Lexington High School, you know, approved my absence, but River Bluff didn't, or whatever, you know, and so for the same thing. So I just want to, can we work on just being consistent as far as parent notes specifically? Because I'm one of those parents that, I just don't take my kids to the doctor. I can't even remember the last time they went to the pediatrician, seriously. So I'm going to write a note every time, and I know a lot of parents do. So I want to protect that.
So that's a very good point, and the principals do have some discretion as far as what's a principal-approved absence and what's not. And you brought a situation to my attention last year. And I had conversations with Mr. Cooper, Mr. McCormick, and Mr. Calhoun, who works directly with our high school principals, and they've worked to ensure that some consistent decision-making will be happening from this point forward. So that, that should have been addressed, and that issue should not repeat itself.
Thank you.
So to be clear, if you're a parent and you write a note, if your child was like, my child came down with a fever of ninety-nine, and I didn't send him to school, that's excused, or that's up to the, to the principal?
That would be, so I'm going to ask Ms. McCormick up here, that would be excused by the principal. But there are some parameters by that in terms of the number of days.
So, yes, ma'am, so parents have the opportunity to write ten parent notes per school year. So if your child woke up, they weren't feeling well, and you thought it was in their best interest to stay home, but it wasn't to the point where you felt like you needed to take them to the doctor, you could write a parent note, and that day would be excused. In terms of truancy, yes, ma'am, that day would be excused.
But, but can you clarify that regarding high school and absences for classes for credit?
Yes. So a parent note will not, does not go towards seat time, excusing seat time. Parent notes purely just keep you from being truant. Yes.
So, but does a doctor excuse go towards, or either one, it doesn't matter, if you, if you're not in that class? Because it's certain, certain amount of classes based on the days, right? That, that class, I'm getting in the weeds, but I just want to be clear.
Yes, ma'am. So depending on the length of the class, the duration of the class, you're allowed to miss so many days, and still be eligible to receive credit in those courses. So a forty-five day class, three ninety-five, full year, ten. That's correct. Yeah, and so how, when it comes to students earning credit in absences, that is a question that I would need to turn over to the instructional department and let them weigh in. We, in Student Services, we addressed the truancy piece. In terms of awarding credit, that's out of the purview of Student Services and truancy.
Ms. Gaskins, is that a question you can answer if it's the doctor's?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for getting me up, moving a little bit. It's getting stiff over there. So when it does come to high school credits, you know, in a semester class, you can only miss five unexcused absences. And a parent note would technically be an unexcused absence when it comes to credits, according to the state. A medical excuse would wipe away a absence. For a year-long class, for instance, if you're in an embedded class at Lexington High School, or you're in a year-long class at River Bluff High School, you would get ten unexcused days, or ten days, that a parent note would, would suffice, you know, for instance. Because we're not worried about you. The kid was sick, you didn't go to the doctor, hey, my kid was blah blah blah. We're not worried about you, but you, but you still weren't there, according to the credit. Obviously, we got some ways that you can make up that, if you go beyond, some credit recovery opportunities, some attendance recovery opportunities. But when it comes to actually wiping away an absence inside for a credit-bearing class, it would have to be a medical excuse.
All right, board. Do y'all have any other? Let's see, where are we? The last agenda item. All right. Do y'all have any other questions on policy JH, JHR, or the deletion of policy JE? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Calhoun. And, wait, who else is up there? Oh. All right, hang on just a second. Where are we now? Yay!
Madam Chair. Could I take a point of privilege before we adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Rice.
It's been said earlier, but I would like to say to Dr. Gaskins, I've heard a lot of people say Ms. Gaskins, even through this meeting, even after the announcement was made. But I, I just want to commend you on accomplishing the task, showing the persistence and the drive of the postage stamp, where it sticks to one thing until it arrives and gets there. I just think it's very, very vital to have a chief academic officer that is showing our students that even once you've been out of high school for a few years, you can still continue to grow and continue to educate yourself, and continue to become even more in education. And education is one thing my parents, who are both schoolteachers, told me, no one can ever take away from you. Because once it's in your head, it's there, nobody can take it out. So I just want to commend you on accomplishing that task. I know you like the postage stamp, holding on, can we get there through rain, fire, sleet, snow, whatever. But just congratulations. And so I will now, I affectionately call Ms. Miller Chief, but I'll now call you Doc. So now you'll be Doc.
As you may have noticed, the board agenda is now managed through a new platform called Diligent Community. If you access the agenda through the board's webpage on the district website, you are able to follow the agenda and watch the livestream at the same time. We encourage you to check out our new page. Our first community conversation will be held October twenty-ninth at Gilbert High School from six to seven PM. Please join us at this, or one of the other scheduled meetings in your attendance area. The first thirty minutes will be roundtable style, together feedback on our strategic plan, and then thirty minutes of open dialogue for you to address the board on any topic. All dates and times are on the district's website and social media. October, as we said earlier, is National Principals Month, as well as Cyber Security Awareness Month, National Physical Therapy Month, National Custodial Appreciation Day, National School Lunch Week, and National School Safety Week. For all of our employees who fall into these categories and work so hard to support our students, staff, and families, the Board of Trustees greatly appreciates you. We also greatly appreciate Ms. Tracy Halliday, who is celebrating her birthday today.
Aye.
With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, members of the board, faculty, administration, and everybody else that's here, I move we adjourn and go home.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.